Good morning, everyone. Yeah, good morning, everyone. And welcome to a webinar on supply assurance during times of shortage. We are lucky enough to have with us today two team guests from Thomas Scientific, who I'll be introducing later. But first, let me introduce myself. My name is Darrell Buck. I'm with SEMI, and I head up their cost-saving programs. I was going to wait about another few seconds before I get into this presentation to make sure that everyone has downloaded their correct web go-to webinar program and was able to hear us. Okay. So, welcome again. As a quick overview of today's events, I'd like to explain a little bit about why we're having this series of webinars. In the past, you or many of you have seen me speak at various in-person SEMI events where I would tell you about our cost-saving programs. The CSP is a set of agreements that our members have access to so they can get reduced pricing and different terms and services that are available only to the members of SEMI. Now that we're not able to meet in person, we asked each of the providers of our CSP if there were specific issues that had been exacerbated by the pandemic. And six of our members have actually come back, our providers, excuse me, have come back and said, yes, we have exactly topics that we would love to discuss with the members to help them get through this serious crisis. We've outlined an agenda for them to discuss the specific issue that was exacerbated and then outline what they see are the best practices for mitigating the issue. And finally, we've asked them if they would be able to take specific questions from the members as it relates to issues that they are experiencing. So before I hand this over to Kareem, I wanted to make sure that you're all aware that you're all muted and you will be muted for the entire duration of the webinar. Our only means of communication will be through the Q&amp;A control panel, which you should be able to see. It came up on the right. You can enter your questions at any time. I'll be monitoring them and so that we're ready to go quickly into them as this webinar comes to its third stage. And finally, this webinar will be recorded and will be posted on the SEMI coronavirus resource pages. And we'll be sending out a link to you so that you can review today's events as well as share it with your counterparts. So without further ado, I'd like to hand this presentation over to Kareem Dosa. He is the Senior Vice President at Thomas Scientific over Clean Room Solutions. Please go ahead, Kareem.
Hey, Darrell. Thank you very much. And greatly appreciate the opportunity to participate in this conversation today. And we do want to make it a conversation and give you one second. I'll just bring up the presentation here and hopefully everyone can see it. So again, thank you to you, SEMI, GPS, and FOA for giving us this terrific opportunity to just share some experiences with you. And let me quickly introduce myself and John. So I'm a Senior Vice President at Thomas Scientific. We're a Carlisle Group company responsible for our Clean Room CE Solutions business as well as a few other businesses within the Thomas family of companies. I've got over 25 years plus, almost 30 now, servicing value-add, providing value-added supply chain solutions or contamination control solutions into the semiconductor space as well as the regulated space. My partner, John, you want to go ahead and introduce yourself? John?
Sorry about that. I was muted. Thank you, Kareem. My name's John Westlin. I'm the Director of CE Technology for the Thomas Scientific Clean Room CE Solutions Group. I bring 30 years of relevant distribution experience in the clean room and static control marketplace to the team and help us sort out the different options that we have to bring to the marketplace for the customer applications and specifically have some strong background in the market segments attributed to SEMI and FOA and GPS. Thank you.
Terrific, terrific. Thanks, John. So John and I are gonna, well, we'll take a look here. So we thought we'd just take a second and just quickly talk about, you know, what is the current market situation? And I'm not going to spend much time on this, but it's important to know as it relates to, as we get into this area, you know, how do you solve your problems of mitigating risk within your supply chain of these materials that really support your manufacturing processes? So first is just really all gown room consumables, including all wiping and cleaning, technical cleaning materials, you know, from head to toe. Every one of those products are on some sort of allocation or in some shortage of supply around the globe, not just here in North America. Two, I'll just touch quickly about where we see the availability status. We've got a couple of charts to share with you, a little bit more detail on this. And then John and I together will talk about some of the key inputs that we're seeing. I'm sure you're seeing it as well. The first is just really when you look at these, you know, six categories and we've dumied it down into these six apparel, which is frocks and coveralls and things of that nature. Right now, based on a survey of the top 11 branded manufacturers and then add us as the 12th manufacturers in the globe of supporting these products, in most cases, we're looking at a 90 to 120-day get-well date. And that's what that means. So, you know, there is, everything's on allocation. And so that's what that's what that means. And then when we say allocation, all of the manufacturers now, including Cardinal's announcement today, are based on historical usage. And that's based on 2019 usage. Some took the last six months, others took the last four months, and then they extrapolated that forward. And that's how they're allocating supply to either you directly or through your value-added distribution channel partner. But that's how supply is being allocated. And then, and then when we talk about some of the inputs, you'll talk about some of the encumbrances that they're faced with just providing these value-added materials when we refer to clean room type materials. So bouffant caps, you can see that gloves, shoe covers are in a critical zone. Face masks are improving. And that's an interesting phenomenon there that we just want to touch on in that, as supply catches up with demand, which it is in two categories. It's catching up in the general use. If you're in Asia, they call it a civilian mask. If you're in the U.S., it's a general three-layer ear loop protection mask. That general use mask that's used mostly by your administrative folks, that is, supply is reaching demand. And also, we're now starting to see the economics change where you saw a price spike at close to 50 cents a mask has dropped back down to very close to pre-COVID pricing levels, which has dropped down below 10 cents a mask. And in some cases, we've seen spot pricing as low as six or seven cents a mask. And then wipers are on there predominantly if they're sourcing the material, the polyester or the nonwoven from the Wujin province or over in the APAC region and/or to, it's related to IPA. So let me turn this over to John and we'll just talk, we'll just kind of ham and egg this, the inputs of what we're seeing here.
Okay, thanks, Kareem. Resulting from the COVID pandemic and the large influx of demand from the healthcare arena, we've seen some big changes in the supply chain. Typically, the United States is pretty dependent upon the supply chain out of Southeast Asia and maybe China in particular. So from that, you know, we've seen a demand going up and a supply chain inadequacy to keep pace with that. That's really created the situation that we're struggling with in our domestic supply chain for clean room PPE and in general, PPE products overall.
Yeah. Hey, John, can I make a quick comment on that too? Is what we're seeing is the diversion of product. And what we mean that, we say alternate manufacturing choices driving PPE. So gloves, for example, worldwide glove demand right now is just pushing north of 550 billion units. Current supply or capacity against that is just above 360 billion. So you can see there's a pretty significant gap in just what's being demanded versus what the market can supply. Now, that's predominantly supporting exam gloves, you know, or gloves that are used in the medical work environment. Those glove, that glove demand though, is taking the converting capacity of what traditionally would have gone into clean room glove processing and manufacturing. So manufacturers are making choices. And in fact, two manufacturers shared with me yesterday, they're making more money, in this case, or letting the economics drive them. They have a higher demand and making more money producing exam gloves than they would be producing value-added clean room gloves. So you can see that's what's causing, it's another key input and causing the significant shortage, especially in gloves. And that's going to get significantly worse as we go out in the coming months. Thanks, John.
This is also driving raw material shortages for many of the products used in the PPE consumables. Not only nitrile associated with the gloves, but the materials that go inside the inner layer of the face mask, the milk bone polypropylene that also is in some of the middle layers of the SMS three-layer polypropylene garments and frocks and coveralls. And of course, that shortage is driving prices upward and to the right. And it continues to move the product availability in a direction that is chasing the demand right now that continues to grow as this pandemic continues to proliferate itself, not only in our country but around the globe.
Yeah, I'll just add two more comments and we'll move on to the next slides. I think you're getting the idea of what's driving this and I'm sure you know most of these inputs as well. You know, one other key thing is just labor and, you know, the management control of labor that's going in and out. And depending on how, you know, what's Malaysia, China, you know, Thailand, Vietnam, all moderating labor loads going into factories to support either converting of nonwovens into gowns and apparel and things like that, shoe covers or face masks or glove lines. And that's all impacting capacity and throughput. The other important thing to note is, you know, where the majority of the manufacturing had its origins, at least in raw material, which in province was the largest province in the world or largest area in the world providing that raw material base substrate. And then, of course, nitrile. It's all coming out of that region. The key is, is you'll see is, as we go further into this, it's just understanding, a really important component is understanding the manufacturing origin. Where is the final mile or final mile in manufacturing or converting being done? And ideally, it's someplace outside of China. And then, and then I'll just quickly, John, wrap this slide up on price inflation. You're going to continue to see this. We can quote Kimberly-Clark, Ansel, Cardinal, Halyard, Techswipe. I can go all the way down. The core branded manufacturers have all instituted mid-year price increases. They've called out force majeure. Or they've seen other inputs increase, whether it's transportation and logistics. But they're all calling out, in some cases, we've seen from a couple of the branded manufacturers, we've already seen three specific price changes. And so we're trying to work with the marketplace on behalf of our customers, see what we can do to start to hedge that. And there'll be some more conversation on that in a second here. Let me go to the next slide here. So this slide, just real quick, we're not going to speak too much, but something that we thought we'd share is we're publishing this weekly as an organization to our key clients and customers, where we're just trying to give them a snapshot. There's a few more details behind this. We just want to show you a quick snapshot where we're identifying at a high level the category, a sub-level category, what material substrates, because that's really important when we start to think about this. And then really, who's on allocation and who's not? And if there's available supply? And then we try to assess a get-well date. And this gets updated really every week. For example, the get-well date with, you know, a very, very large branded manufacturer shifted last week from November to now in certain categories to the end of Q1 of 2021. John, let me just take this one too, real quick here. So we just wanted to list, you know, the brands that, just to make sure that what's, who are the constituents that are making up the supply chain? And you can see, you know, it's who's who in the industry. Every one of these manufacturers is on allocation. Every one of these manufacturers are handling allocation in a slightly different way. The good news is most of them are being consistent with the way they're handling it. And again, most of it's predicated on 2019 usage. A few of them are, have identified that they're still accepting orders for new requirements. However, their lead time has gone from, whether it's maybe it's a traditionally a 30 to 45-day lead time to anywhere between 75 and 120-day lead time. Some of these manufacturers are focusing out on 120-day lead times. So, you know, it's the bellwethers of the industry. And also, one other important note here is that if, many of these manufacturers, you'll see that really the largest portion of their business is driven by the healthcare marketplace. So, you know, they have allocated, like if you use DuPont, it's publicly, they made it public, you know, that they're first supporting first responders and then working backwards. However, DuPont is in a very good position right now in coveralls and other related materials that they support in the marketplace. All right, so let's move on here. So really, this is where we want to center the most amount of the energy of this conversation today. And I'll open it up and then we'll talk about what we'd like to refer to as just in a really practical matter, you know, wearing a set of eyes that if we were running a factory and/or an assembly line, you know, or responsible for maintaining the uptime of a fab or a clean environment, what are some of the practical things that you should be thinking about from both sides, right? And to get that connected. So, you know, if you look over here to the left, you know, it's really defining a strategy. Almost everybody, I'm sure everybody in this phone has a strategy. The question is, how have you executed and implemented it? And it does require some different things in this current, in the current, you know, this current pandemic, given that the supply chain is so severely compromised. And there's so many other inputs that are impacting, impacting the supply and the sustainability of the supply at the right quality. And those are, those are three big things there. So, you know, first of all, we're just, you know, we strongly recommend, if you haven't already done so, is really, you know, get yourself organized around a risk assessment, understand the probability and start to, you know, identify the probability of each of your core categories, especially in the core indirect materials of these gown room, critical supplies. And then, and then start to, you know, prepare your own plan. And that, that goes with creating an alternate supplier selection plan that's founded on quality and reliability. And, you know, one of the key point would be is the source of manufacturing, right? Is it redundant in terms of every you sourcing supplies that are, you know, are originating out of either China, North America, Mexico, et cetera, India, Vietnam, et cetera? You know, the next piece is to me unlocking the success of the collaboration. It's really educating and collaborating to, you know, qualify multiple products from multiple manufacturing origins and doing that in a very organized and expeditious way. It's not just one, it's got to be two or three and ensure that all three of those products can interchangeably be used in your manufacturing lines. And then the last thing is lock-in supply. We're locking in customers where we're both locking in, helping them get through the short-term challenge with a spot buy and then, and then locking into the future and allocating their requirements into our allocation of supply from the manufacturers. And that's a really critical thing. Otherwise, we're not committing to anything, much like most of the other value-added channel partners in the market. We can't guarantee supply. So, you know, that means, and we'll go to a key to success, but what that really means is you may be locking in, we may stopgap you for a month, but then you're locking in for the next six to 12 months. And then we're building that into the manufacturing allocation upfront, way up line in the, in the, in the supply chain. So, John, why don't you start with, we'll just talk about some of the keys to success. And, and then, this is our last slide. Why don't you start with this and then I'll add color to this?
Okay, thanks, Kareem. I think one of the important things for our customers to share with our technical sales professionals, which represents the marketplace, is that sharing what is important about the products, whether it's the technical specifications or the preferences for, you know, simple things like texture of product, like the glove surface or packaging. But sharing that with the companies that you're looking at to help you supply products so that we can do our best job of trying to find items that meet the equivalent status in the event that your primary products are on allocation and are not meeting your demands and your supply chain partner is not keeping adequate inventory because getting inventory is the key to this entire process right now. That is, that is the most important aspect of keeping your supply chain whole and making sure, like Kareem said, that you've got alternative items identified so that you've got a better chance of keeping inventory in stock. And our spot buy program, which goes out to factories overseas and looks for people that are looking for new customer long-term relationships with Thomas Scientific Clean Room CE is really the key to what we're bringing to the market and how we're helping make sure that we can mitigate this problem.
Yeah, I just had a quick with color and then we'll take just two more minutes here and then we'll jump over to open Q&amp;A. But really, you know, and I, you know, I've been in this industry for a long time. I know many of you, you know, I grew up with the largest semiconductor manufacturer in the world. Transparent collaboration is something that we're finding that is the only way to success. And if we don't believe that we can be aligned and collaborate in a very open and reality-based way, then we just don't see that that's where we should be putting our energy. And, and that's, that's the reality of today because the demand is so much greater than supply that we have to make sure that together we're aligning in an area where we can drive mutual success. And that's really when we, when we think of transparent collaboration. And that goes to anything from, you know, what are you using? Where are you using it? Why are you using it there? Perhaps there's an alternate way to use that product and use less critical products in an application that has, you know, less critical requirements. You know, shareholder alignment, really understanding, you know, that you've worked through if the portal is moving into procurement, supply chain and planning. But really, it's getting direct connect with quality manufacturing and engineering. And then, of course, logistics for the last mile to ensure we've got all those key value points well dialed in as we're moving down this path to qualify one, two, or three different alternatives to your current plan of records. John, you want to take just last couple of points?
Yeah, I think our industry is marked by factories and brand names that use OEM sources to help meet their needs for products. So we've taken the opportunity to position people over in the APAC region that are familiar with the marketplace and help us find some of the original equipment manufacturing facilities to offer really equivalent and same products that may be coming to the market under a different brand name but are really the source product for what you're currently have approved from a name-brand vendor. Maybe it's a Kimberly-Clark, maybe it's an Ansel, maybe it's somebody else. But, but the way this marketplace works, that's, that's a wise thing to do. And it helps provide alternative products to help make, keep your supply chain from being at risk of stockout. So that's, that's important. That's one of the things that we've targeted to help our customers. And also, you know, giving us more information about how you use the product and what's critical to you, whether it's this technical specifications, whether it has to do with something, you know, like a heavy metal or a salt or whether it has to do with, like I said, texture and grip. Those things are critical for us, making sure we can find that product for you as quickly and easily as possible. And then at that point in time, you have to strike while the iron's hot. Otherwise, someone else will take it because, as Kareem's mentioned, demand is 30-plus percent greater than the supply capabilities. And that's creating a lot of angst for people. So we just want to share that with you and make sure you understand that this process is a two-sided process where we need your input and then we can do a good job of trying to help you or find alternatives for you.
Thanks, John. And by no means, you know, our foundation of industry is built on our global brands, you know, and whether it's Kimberly-Clark, DuPont, Ansel, contact, Techswipe, et cetera. And, and, you know, we are adamant supporters of these global brands. They're just unfortunately in a position where they're not able to supply all the, all the requirements. And so, you know, where we can work with a global brand, absolutely, we're bringing that forward. And there are trusted partners and valued partners. And, and, but we are off, we do have, we've had to engineer alternate options. And as a smaller company, you know, we're a little more agile. It's well back, you know, we very quickly pivoted and built out some capability in key regions around the world to be able to support efforts in keeping you in supply. Well, that is it. We want to again, thank you, Darrell, to you and the SEMI team and FOA for giving us opportunity to have this quick conversation with you. And both John and I are open for any question. And I'll turn it back over to you, Darrell.
Well, thank you so much, Kareem and John. That was very informative. Just quickly, we've been talking about qualifying alternative sources. So a question here is, are there one or two specific best practices or steps that you see fabs taking that help to shorten the qualification process for one of these new products or service that you're trying to bring in as an alternative supply?
Yeah, yeah, I can tell you something really simple. As we've seen fabs pareto out the risk of product categories by product category and really look at a bouffant cap differently than they would look at a glove that's being used by the tool. And, and of course, always taking into account any safety considerations, but really not, you know, realizing that maybe they could paper quall a bouffant cap versus having to do, you know, a rapid, you know, in-use test for a glove. And those factories that have done that have been able to lock in their supply immediately. And we have many, many examples of that where together, we just recommend that they identify, you know, look at the product itself, the area of use, any safety considerations. And then they could immediately move forward with a paper quall on specs versus samples. Much of this product is coming just in time from the different sources around the globe. And it's not just sitting on the shelf. It's there, but if it's on the shelf, it's already allocated to other customers. So speed is everything there, but understanding that upfront is really important. John, any thoughts on that as well?
I think that you gotta, as you said, you gotta pareto the products and look at what comes in contact with your product that's most sensitive. And then identify the parameters for how you're evaluating products so that you can, you know, make sure that if you've got an independent test lab that's doing evaluations or you have your own inside engineering and test departments that are doing that, that they're keyed in to the importance of the timing of this event. Because when product does become available, there's a lot of people looking for it. And the factories that are selling it are taking orders, first come, first served, until they find homes for these products. So it's important that all of your team, your background team that does quality and test or evaluation is on board to handle these requirements, you know, right away and put it up the list of their priorities. and put it up the list of their priorities as they're getting these opportunities. I think that's, that's one of the key things that we've seen best.
Okay, well, I, I believe we have used up our, our time today. Wanted, thank you so much, we will send, I'll send you some questions that we have specifically that we didn't get a chance to address directly to John and Kareem and maybe we can add them into some color when we put this presentation up. So I was wondering if I could take over control again or if I have presentation control? Not sure. There we go. So again, I want to thank you guys so much for starting off our back to work series. The next one up that we were planning on putting together is a presentation by DHL and they're going to help us with some of the specific new changes and regulations for transportation to some specific countries like Russia and China that are coming out this September. So please watch for an email on this and make sure if you're not the person in charge that you forward it to the logistic folks in your company. Secondly, as I mentioned earlier, we will have this recording on our COVID resource website on semi and you'll be getting that address in an email even though it's right here. And finally, if this is something that you weren't aware of and you're interested in looking into the semi cost-saving programs, it's very simple, you go to semi.org CSP and you'll see that there are at least 20 offers there, a number of members are utilizing them and the key is that this is a member benefit that is highly underutilized within the membership space and we'd love to see more participation in this. It is included in your member dues. When you join, you will be taken to a page that features the, the new Thomas Scientific offer, so you can quickly reach out to either Kareem or John to see if they can help you in any of your shortages that are you're currently, currently experiencing. So with that, I think we need to close today's session. Again, I want to thank Kareem and John and look forward to our next session. Thank you.